All right, now call on me in your order to give the pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, this is our, we've been planning board meeting for March 12th. We are being recorded for public access, YouTube, etc. And attendance tonight is myself, I have someone for chairman.
Paul Kimball, remember.
Wayne Andrews, remember.
Is it Noel Ince? All right, so Brendan will be down shortly after the slide and get up. Do Franklin Street first? It's in the part of your TV here.
You have a plan?
I do. Yeah, I'll give you that token up when I read this out, just for the record. We are 545 Franklin Street, single residential A2 limited industrial. Type of structure existing duplex to remain and property single family drop well. Owner's name Jeffrey Bailey, 545 Franklin Street. Acquired the property 61617. Application has been filed with the clerk, no previous appeal has been made. Sections of bylaw which relief was requested, Article 6, Section 240 dash 6.5. Reduction of contiguous?
Contiguous?
Contiguous, thank you. Minimum lot frontage, Article 5, Section 240 dash 5.4. Construction of a detached dwelling. Little attached letter here of some kind from Gray Consulting. Dear Board members, on behalf of the applicant, hereby submitting this application for a variance requested for 545 Franklin Street. Existing apartment consists of 3.78 lot, which is existing duplex. The applicant proposes to divide the property into two lots, retain the existing duplex on lot 1, and construct a new single-family dwelling on lot 2. We hereby request the following variance be approved. Zoning by, oh, ZBI or ZBL? So ZBI?
Article, oh, zoning should be CBA.
Okay, that's why, that's what's on me for loop. Article 5, Section Reduction of contiguous, minimum lot frontage of 120 feet within single residential A2 zone. Out of the two, construction detached dwelling separate lot applied. On enclosed, please find the following. Okay, so that's all for now. Any questions? Or comments?
Yes.
Wayne?
This is going to be the driveway.
Yeah.
How wide is that?
The driveway?
Yes. How long, how wide even that?
I don't see an exact measurement across here. Then again, be around 40 feet. That could be the length for this line.
And this, this whole thing is the second lot, right? But this is the buildable area?
That's, that meets the offsets. So they, they can build anywhere within?
Within this, within this.
The lot, lot?
It is.
So you meet it here and meet it here, but this is?
This is a driveway, reduce the frontage here, but the property fall the driveway.
We signed the, uh, forehand a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, I do remember that.
So if we sign the forehand, we probably should recommend, otherwise we shouldn't have signed the forehand.
I didn't see a problem with it when he explained it last time. So it seemed like a pretty, it's a mushroom lot, but we know.
We didn't have this side plane.
Nope, did not.
We're not acting on the site plan, we're acting on the, he's asking for a variance on the furniture.
Right.
And that furniture, what, what is it, that high-grade business or is it?
It's a limited industrial in A2.
Eight, it's one street, it's A2.
Yeah.
All right, A2, you've got to have what, 100?
In the back, you see, yeah, limited industrial.
190 feet.
He goes.
150 feet for A1, A1.
Well, he has 127 here, I don't know if that's what that means, right, yeah. Across the back, what's up the front? 130. It's a lot, isn't it?
Yeah.
But the back would be about the same as the front.
So, yeah.
So you got 127 feet across the front?
That, that's for the existing lot.
For the existing, correct, and the driveway is remaining 40, minus 40 feet for here?
Yeah.
That's how I'm reading it, I don't know. Those are coordinates, so it's 127 feet, he has.
127 lot frontage?
For this lot here, so the whole thing looks like it's 100, is that 130? 130 feet?
Yeah.
All the way across, he's less than, minus 40 for that, so only 90 feet across the line.
I think this is, he's got a radius, that's a radius, he's got 130 feet here.
Yeah.
That's a radius.
Okay.
And I think he's got a 40-foot length.
Okay, why starting out like that, it was less 40 feet from 1/3? I didn't know if that's it.
I think it's 100.
Okay, okay.
He's got that much, 40 feet?
40 feet.
Yeah.
Can I make a motion and review back to my, the favorable action?
I'll second that, we can second.
Wait a minute before you take a vote.
Any further comments?
Well, I don't know, just, just something. I can't believe that's 40 feet that he's going to have all the way.
The streets, public streets has 50 feet for the width of the street.
No, he, he's got a driveway of 12 feet, 24, he's saying 40 feet.
Yeah.
That's a 40-foot driveway.
Yeah.
But if he's going in that path, I assume he's going to have a decent driveway width.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's got to have a double lane from there.
Yeah, because this is the middle of the driveway, so if you figure 12 from here, there's probably about eight left there, and then about 30 feet there.
Yeah.
So, that's just a rough map, looking at dimensions. So it doesn't seem that bad, because he's still, the frontage spot's still pretty good, and we approve the, like.
If this stays, is this going to be the location of the building?
Yeah.
Potential, yeah. How, how far back and how many?
It doesn't say.
300 feet.
Yeah.
That's 180, this is 180 to here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And he's got another.
Yeah.
So we definitely need to find 100 down there.
It's not a subdivision, so it's.
Yeah.
That's right.
Good way.
Well, the subdivision.
This is not a subdivision.
They've already subdivided lots of separate lot.
It's a forehand.
To build a single house on a single lot. He just owns four lots.
They'll settle.
Yep.
All right, I think, I think I can vote for that.
All right, all in favor? Aye. Three, yeah, three nothing. All right, thank you, sir. That's yours. All right, here's the fun one. That's you again. We have 26 Carver, I believe Avenue. I did not see a Carver Street written, but I could be wrong.
No, and it says, uh.
I can't.
Says Carver Street real.
It does, yeah, it comes up.
This comes up on his page.
Okay, I think, when I put Google Maps, it only gave me a Carver app, so that's why I was wondering.
Okay.
So, okay, 26 Carver Street, District A2, existing non-conforming mixed use. Uh, owner 26 Carver Street Realty Trust. We have acquired the property 3921. Application has been filed with the clerk. And yes, a previous appeal has been made, case 13 in 2021. Permit for existing use and, I don't know, structure maybe, I don't know.
What?
Just kind of a stud?
Uh, permits for existing, structure, instructure more detrimental, special permit, site plan approval for, pavement required, requiredly changed, convert existing office space into studio apartment, assist to define use to support of the property. See the text?
Uh, I'll read the cover. Dear Honorable Appeals Board, Before your application was proposed, it allowed a change of existing non-performing use to another non-performing use that is not more detrimental. You'll also find a site plan approval as part of the application, there is an acquired property compliance. Property is 26 Carver Street, contains 60-foot by 40-foot mixed-use commercial building. As shown in the existing floor plan, the building currently consists of two commercial contracted maintenance garage spaces. In the middle unit, an office space, completely kitchen, full bathroom, closet. Our proposal is to convert unit 2, the existing, the existing office space into a studio apartment. The site and building, as it exists today, was permitted by the state of July 6, 2021. Case 13 dash 2021. For a mixed-use building, the existing office space area is located in unit 2 of the unit having its own meter electric gauge, back kitchen, bathroom, closet, and the building was constructed. A two-hour fire rating was provided in interiored office space and monitored fire alarm system installed throughout the building to allow flexibility to a potential use, change in the future. If you look to the proposed floor plans and come comparison with the existing floor plans, you'll notice there are no changes that lead to say the exterior building appearance. The only item should be necessary to make this conversion legal should be a special permit from the appeals board. Site plan approval showing compliance of two dedicated parking spaces and potential walk-through with the building inspector. Given the economy change and slowdown in construction industry, do not use it for an office and not necessary at this time. If granted the permits to allow this conversion of the office space into a studio apartment, would be a significant aid financially supporting this property. Sincerely, Kevin Perkins.
This is, you come down here and Mr. Perkins?
Yeah. And it looks like that.
Yeah. Originally, we got a little messy.
I got another letter, you have to read it off real quick.
There's a letter there, yeah.
Yeah. But this letter serves for Mr. Perkins' application along to convert the office space into a living quarters 26 Carver Street. Level 754 of the street and also own land on Carver Street. Mr. Perkins made many improvements to the property and helped maintain the street. Before Mr. Perkins bought the property, my brother lived there, and I ran my construction excavation business from the garage at this property. The property was already used for a garage and living quarters, so I don't have a problem with him doing the same thing. It will help secure the building, keep it high on the neighborhood. Sincerely, James C. Marvel, 754 of the street. Object. Welcome, Brendan?
Welcome. Hello.
We are looking at 26 Carver Street. Got it.
Okay.
Any comments, questions, statements?
Statement is, uh, this was approved by the zoning board. Uh, there are a number of conditions on the zoning board that haven't been applied, that haven't been done. There's supposed to be a stone wall put in, that hasn't been done. There's no pavement, there's all dirt, and it's not a nice place for a residential unit here. We want to, uh, approve this, recommend approval. The approval should be that, uh, the area is cleaned up. Is vegetation put in there? So on and so forth, so it looks like a house and not just a garage. Uh, understand that previously it was a, um, industrial type area garage with the excavation business. So, uh, I would tend to think of, uh, want an approval, but I'm open to suggestions.
No, I agree, I think.
It's subject to the eventual stipulation to be.
Yes, yeah.
Be completed before.
The stone wall paved, cleaned up, vegetation, yeah, everything. Yeah. But yeah, that's what they're going to do, I had no problem with it, as long as they.
That has to be done before they can, uh, possession of.
Yeah. It's just kind of, you got the zoning board next anyway, so. Brendan?
No comments.
Okay. Too, too, too late of an addition?
I've known what, I actually read this.
Oh, no, I just read, you're not here late, that's all, you know, because you're upstairs, that's all.
No, I'm, I, I, you're serious.
I'll make a motion.
But I, I did read it, I'll second the motion.
You'll make what's the motion?
I'm making a motion to recommend approval, subject to all the requirements that you previously set. You know, done and satisfied prior to any more construction. Before the building was, yeah.
Yeah. Second?
It's, it's done, yeah.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see.
Uh, well.
So motion by Wayne? Second by Brendan?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Four nothing now. We'll add for the people in the audience, welcome Brendan Griffin.
That's his.
Oh, that's his. All right. Oh, I'm sorry, wait. Yeah, it's over, huh? Yeah, it's over, Sam.
Yeah.
Nothing, I'm sorry, I just, I just brushed it. How do we make out upstairs? Approved?
I will give nothing either right now or later.
All right, no. Brendan's update on the MBTA?
Okay.
High density.
So. What? No, not, not.
Okay, good.
I just attended the Board of Selectmen meeting on Thursday 11.
Thursday 12?
March 12th, the Board of Selectmen meeting. Requesting approval of the Board of Selectmen to set the hearing board's public hearing for April 8, 2024. There was discussion, brief, from the.
The assistant town administrator? Assistant town administrator.
From the assistant town administrator, Kathy, that for, there's a reason of an illness, one of, there's an attorney that is not feeling well, so they are pushing to have the bylaw reviewed in totem and on the 9th of April.
The 9th of August.
But, here's, but it's been approved for us to set the year.
So basically, that, it just has to be completed by the time it goes on to the warrant, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, and, and the reason for that is expedience. Because there's nothing that requires us, say something goes wrong.
Yeah.
We've done everything we're supposed to. If something goes wrong, then we would have to go from there.
Which is to take it off the warrant.
Okay, well, and there was no, there was no real, there was no real.
Objections?
Wiggle room for that, because you're going to say, what, people can't be sick?
Right.
Can we, can we have a, a meeting on that? Public meeting on the 8th?
Yes, it was, it was approved and suggested to schedule the year.
Okay, so what would like to make a motion then?
Well, let's just finish with the comments, I was first, somebody did want a second.
You said something about the 9th?
Yes, they are sending, we need a final draft, complete draft for the public hearing. This is the info that I was giving.
That, I believe it's, so the, um, lawyer for the town is reviewing it. That doesn't mean that something would need to change. It would just be, if there is something, then we would have to start the process over again, but if there isn't anything, then the process would already be done and we'd be able to look forward.
So if, if, if they find something wrong on the 9th, then it's moot.
The thing is, the lawyer can review it and recommend that it's a final draft, it doesn't necessarily have to be voted on by the selectmen.
Correct.
So we, but we need the final wording for the public.
Right, so the final, the wording that we use on the 8th is the wording. If after that point, he says X, Y, or Z, then we would have to start this whole process over again regardless.
We're doing a.
Right.
Right, yes, yes, yeah.
That's right.
Yeah.
The Z is for hope.
Does, uh, Monday, the 8th is a Monday, so Monday, the 8th at 6:00 PM work for everybody.
5:00.
I don't think I can do 5:00 unless my wife works, so.
Six.
Yeah, 5:00 doesn't work for me, I.
Yeah.
Now, I wouldn't think it's going to be publicly watched.
You're right, not right, but we're going to try to, maybe we're not for Melissa, who's getting that claim next morning.
Is sufficient for you?
Yep, 6 o'clock's sufficient if we, if people can swing that.
Are you okay, Brendan?
Yes, I just wanted to, um, make sure that I put for everything else that was said. So six is good, very perfect.
Yep. Who did?
I didn't even have.
Oh, you're going to be on vacation, right? Okay.
No, you missed all.
So do we have a motion to make the public hearing for the MBTA community's overlay zoning bylaw? Public hearing for Monday, April 8th at 6:00 PM?
So moved.
I'll, I'll second it. All in favor of the public hearing?
Yes. Next piece of this unrelated directly to bylaw piece. I am proposing that we hold this meeting in the main.
In the, do you think there's going to be a lot of people?
I think there will be enough.
Okay.
I will, um, the, subject to availability, I will schedule in, uh.
Or the, or the Board of Selectmen's.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, setting as well, so.
Okay, so that, that works.
Yeah.
Probably, yes, so.
So I'll try, I'll try to get there at 5:00 and just set up whatever we got to do.
You have to have the, uh, the janitor set up the chairs and the, the microphone.
Yep, I'll take care of all that.
Um, Judy?
Um, I had previously reached out, um, and gotten a couple of dates together, so, um, Judy Barrett from the Barrett Planning Group will be in attendance that night to help with any questions or things like that.
Is it going to be live?
She, um, it would be.
Just the public.
Recorded.
Well, if we're refusing the alternative that's available, might be an idea to.
I can find out, yeah, I don't know.
It's kind of a big deal.
The requirements of it, so I can find out.
I can email W E C A, or you can just email and see if he wants to do it.
Yeah, no, I think.
Yeah, we know if that's.
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll, I think it's fine, I'll double check with, you know, the selectmen's office to make sure there's no other hoops we have to jump through for it, but I will.
Do you think I could be one, some volunteers to hand out?
Oh, sure.
So I can get my daughter and her, one of her friends, maybe?
Sure, that'd be great.
You know what?
Yeah.
She did it last time, for us, for the marijuana one.
Yeah.
She goes to her public service for school, off of National Honor Society.
That works.
Yeah.
And I think the only other, um, Brandon, I think you have a couple of pieces of mail I dropped on you.
Yeah.
Well, there was a thing about the streetlights.
Yep, I don't know if you guys want to move forward with that, or if you wanted to, because we're, Elaine's not here.
What was the part, what was the next part on that?
It's just the board deciding if they wanted to change.
The requirement.
Yeah.
But in the, um, uh, book here, uh, it says it's going to be approved by the selectmen's.
Right, so it would have to be something that the board gets together, makes some decisions on what they would like to see changed. We'd have to send it up to the Board of Selectmen for them to review it, and then.
What I'm saying, when streetlights come into effect in a subdivision, the Board of Selectmen have to approve it, the planning board can put it this far in subdivision.
Oh.
Okay.
It's already there and accepted, so, going forward, obviously.
I think we just change the verbiage of a location, type of light.
If I'm not mistaken, I think the, uh, the Edison company has the final.
National Edison forgot along.
That's where the. So wherever the pole is put.
Right.
It's the, the other one that makes the determination.
I don't know about that. No, they're going to be on a state road, or maybe.
No, because first of all, any new subdivision has to be underground.
That's right.
Right.
If it's three of what? Three of what has to be underground.
Right, so therefore, it all has to be underground. I believe the town of Whitman is taking over the streetlights.
Yes.
So Boston Edison.
National Edison.
Only sells the electricity. They don't have anything to do with the lights because the counters over the lights, it took the elderly.
But they, I think the, uh, the light company still puts the poles up for the lights.
I don't know, but what they're trying to do is take all that away and give it to the homeowner. And not the developer. So if you have a streetlight on your apartment, in front of your house, it'll be on your property, it'll be your power bill.
I used to pay for that, and I finally got the ticket back.
Yeah, but actually, they want to move that, so that's how they want to move forward. They want to get it off the public, off of all the developers.
Or, or, or for that, I think.
Yeah, well, that's, they want to move it for the future, it'll be all maintenance, is that a good gesture? Unless I'm mistaken by something I'm saying, correct me, my memory is not 100%.
That, that means.
But I believe that sounds what they've, what they want to do.
That means the housing on, uh, on, uh, our district, the senior citizens would have to pay for it.
Going for, not, you would just be going forward, not anything back.
Well, nothing back.
Nothing back, just going forward.
Sir, that's a private development, and the association owns the streetlights. Then they pay for the streetlight that's between Olive Roadway and Olive Street. Section 5.1.2.5, streetlights. Streetlights shall be installed by the selectmen as required by the selectmen after consideration of the safety office and the fire department. Temporary street lighting shall be provided by the developer if the first house is occupied at a ratio of one light per room, four house blocks, the construction and operating costs of said lights will temporarily, permanent, be borne by the developer. Streetlight is normally required in intersections. Prior to the endorsement of the definitive plan, the developer shall provide the board a written documentation from the selectmen showing required locations of streetlights. So that paragraph there says it's all susceptible.
Okay, I will, um, I will suggest that, um, the people that came before us, um, last week, I'll go back and read that section and reevaluate their ideas of what they're looking for.
But we would still have to change this to say, uh, to the homeowner, once the development is completed.
It's up to the selectmen to tell us what they want.
Right, right, but I'm just saying what they, what they, what they're looking for, Justin.
The problem with what, um, a little company states is the developer actually put the streetlights on the town right away, as it did some of the property. So therefore, nobody really owns the streetlights, it doesn't belong to the house because it's on public way.
Okay.
Those light stanchions don't meet the requirements of a town being a certain height or a certain, um, design, and they're not elderly. So there's a problem there, so we want to correct the problem, but I think if they reverse this paragraph, it's up to them, or they should make a suggestion for what's what they want.
You want the number on that again, do you have it?
Yeah, I got it, yeah, so I will, um, I will kick it back over to Town Administrator and DPW and let them know this is the wording of it, and if they could.
Suggest.
Suggest, and then let us know, and we'll go from there.
You'll be our liaison for that anyway, from the selectmen, so come back and go, Justin.
Yeah, it'll, it, it gets them the way it's.
I would attach, when you send that to the, the administrator, just put that into Justin too.
Yep.
Because he's our liaison to the selectmen, so. So he knows all of that.
I will circle them all in.
Please, is, uh, Justin.
Can you put me on it, just so I can see it? Now that I have my laptop, I can see more emails, but.
No, they have a really long agenda, it look, it look like, they got three, uh, some executive sessions, there's appointments, some.
Those go good, yeah, and, well, the pension's being appointed.
Yeah. Uh, Dan. It's so inappropriate for me to say Danielle and Chief Clancy. I'll say, the Clancys are here this evening, and Hanlon is here.
Yep, so that's all difference.
Mrs. Clancy, hard for me to not just say Danielle, that's out of nowhere. So there's some business, so I think I can handle it.
Yeah.
Um, so I think there's a few pieces of mail there, too.
Yes.
Anything good?
This one here is not anything good, it's just strange. Yeah, it's a legal notice from the town of Rockville. Zoning Board of Appeals will be meeting remotely until further notice. Blah, 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 do you want to hear all the?
No.
Because I can't.
COVID.
Zoning Board of Appeals will be meeting remotely until further notice. Zoning Board of Appeals will be meeting remotely until further notice, the video, audio conferencing applications, Zoom will be used if sparkers notices hereby given. In order within G L chat, the forty A, section eleven, public hearing will be held by the Rockville Z D A Tuesday, three nineteen twenty four at seven thirty P M. The application was submitted by Christopher Michael Mercy.
Good job.
All right. Anything else, sir?
That was the only.
You don't.
There's those.
There are.
Z B A decisions.
Z B A decisions. Board of Appeals will hold public hearing on March twenty fifth at seven P M. in the lower town hall, petition of five three one Millies. L L C for site plan approval. See applicant wishes to build an addition for the existing building. And Board of Appeals will have a public hearing on the same night, March twenty five, seven thirty P M. For the petition of D L R Bill, L L C for a special permit from section two four oh, five point four A eight. As the applicant wishes to construct a two-family dwelling property located at seven ten five South Ave, Lot seven. What else? We don't need the zoning Board of Appeals minutes, sorry, but they're here, they're here, Danielle wants to review. And this one, the date is from January twenty third, continue your sheet. Thank you. Minutes for Manuel Ramos, seventy-four Franklin Street, special permit, section two forty, five point four A eight. The Board of Appeals held the public hearing on January twenty two, twenty twenty four, in the lower town hall with the following members, they'll get away. The case was advertised and went to express, a butters were notified, the applicant and his attorney were present. There were three butters present, this case was continued from December eleventh, no doubt, the applicant was up to work with.
Oh, that, that was.
And two butters were satisfied with the revised plans and they liked, there would be a stockade of tanks between their properties. And Bob Cameron made a motion to approve the special permit for a two-family dwelling as shown on, on the plan. As well as a variance from the lot's second requirement, motion seconded, five in favor, ten opposed.
All right.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion accepted.
Uh, one, one second.
Well, motion canceled.
Uh, I'm not, it isn't canceled, um. We don't need to vote to have the meeting up there.
No.
Nope, I included it and.
As it's stated where it's gonna be in the, uh.
Yeah.
Posting or whatever.
You're good?
I'm just not trying.
Nah, that'd be funny. Also, the post of the public hearing should be posted on, should be.
Yeah, it goes on the bulletin board, it will go in the express for two weeks and it will be posted online.
And the law.
Yeah.
Get the adjourn.